Yeah, and they all did that, yeah. All right. If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss contractual matter, illegal matter, and five personnel matters. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just. Introductions.
Dave Hirst.
Robert Tejan.
Catherine Natto.
John Wallston.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Moriarty.
Ewan McNeigh.
Lauren Grasso.
John McPhillips.
Do we have any PIG or SUPA students here tonight? Welcome, thanks for coming. You need to stay until nine o'clock or the meeting is over, whichever one comes first, and don't leave without signing out on one of the sheets that's up here on the table. Otherwise, you won't get credit for being here. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 23rd, 2025 regular board meeting.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Three meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you.
So, the first thing I'd like to have is Becky Bider. Come on up. She is our coordinator, director of our Odyssey of the Mind team. She's been involved with it for years. She's a teacher at the middle school, and we have two teams here this evening who are going to Worlds, and Becky's going to talk a little bit about that process in Odyssey of the Mind, so.
Thank you very much, thank you for having us here tonight. A little bit of background, I know some of you are actually familiar with Odyssey since you're our own children, were part of it a few years ago. But Odyssey is an international creativity competition that challenges students to solve problems and to think outside the box. Teams of five to seven students choose one of five problems. This year, students were tasked with building a ride-on vehicle that helped to show that the journey is often more important than the destination, creating a mechanical animal that performs various tricks, planning a dinner party based on a classic work of literature, rescuing and finding a new home for animals while testing the strength of a balsa wood structure, and telling the stories of constellations from a team-created historic civilization. Odyssey helps students learn some of these so-called soft skills like communication, teamwork, public speaking, budgeting, and negotiating with other people. But it also helps them to develop character strengths like perseverance, leadership, and kindness. Now, coming out of COVID, BC had only one team of five students for the 2021-22 school year. The following year, the program grew to four teams with 21 students. Last year, we sent four middle school teams and one high school team to the regional tournament. All five teams advanced to state finals, with our high school team advancing to world finals last year. This year, we had an amazing seven middle school teams and one high school team compete locally. That's forty, I'm sorry, forty-three middle school kids and seven high school kids. Of that, six middle school teams, I'm sorry, six teams, five middle school, one high school, made it to state finals. And today, we now have two of our teams that are advancing to world finals. I believe this is the first time that Bethlehem has had two teams advance to world finals the same year. They will be going to Michigan State University two weeks from tonight for opening ceremony. We couldn't be more proud of these teams. We're also lucky to have two high school students, both former Odyssey team members, who volunteered their time to work with the middle school teams. Jackie Miller and Sierra Obernasser put in hours helping the students prepare. Sierra especially formed a close bond with many of the students. At state finals, she was awarded the Special Omer Award in recognition of her work. I am so proud of these kids. We have some pictures we can show you. So, these are two of our teams. We had so many middle school teams that wanted to form that we actually had to purchase two building memberships for the middle school, because only five teams are allowed per membership. So, these were our second membership teams, participating in the balsa wood structure competition and the humor constellation one. Next slide, please. And then the next couple of slides, these are our kids that made it to state finals. The team on the left is all sixth grade except for one seventh grade boy. And then we had our Team One vehicle problem. They used a rolling cart, some PVC, some casters, and created a time machine as their vehicle. Next slide, please. The team on the left was our humor, our second humor team, Constellations. Their civilization was Christmas land. And the team on the right was our Problem Three. Their classic work of literature was Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And of course, our two teams moving on to world finals. We have our high school team. We have with us tonight Erica, Nicholas, Stephanie, and Rain. And we have our balsa structure from the middle school. I'm not sure who was there. We have Vandela and Jasmine, Melissa, Ella, and Taylor are all here tonight. Dakota could not be here. So, we're so proud. We leave Tuesday, the 20th, many of us, and we're driving out to Michigan State. Next slide, please. And on top of that, we were very honored this year that Coach Sierra won the Special Omer Award, and I was awarded the Community Star Award for supporting the program and growing the Bethlehem program so much over the past few years. So, it was really an honor for me to be able to give back to Odyssey as well. So, we have our teams. If you guys would like to. Yes, okay, so from the high school team, you guys go one up and shake hands. We have Rain Bider. And we have Erica Piccolo. And Stephanie Piccolo. And we have Nicholas Folio. And we're missing Nex Kridleg, Bridger Lewis, and Jeremy Centron-Artis could not be here this evening. I'm going to skip you for one second. And then from our middle school team, we have Vandela Regon. And Jasmine Harden. Melissa Yang. Ella Cady. Taylor Cooley. And Dakota Timoney could not be here tonight. And then we also have with us tonight Coach Sierra Obernasser. Oh, me? Oh, and me.
Okay. Okay. Yes, I'm going to actually have you just hand it over here. We're going to have you bring that.
Okay, make sure I can see everyone's face.
Can I point this other shoulder?
Oh. Yeah.
Meredith, you can go to the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey, for supporting us over the years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And good luck in Worlds.
Don't forget your pins.
You've got to bring your pins.
Sorry, we have pages.
Six graders, do this. Just a couple other things I wanted to announce. Just a reminder that our universal pre-K registration is open. It opened last week, May 1st, so I would encourage any families who have preschool children who are eligible to register. They have till May 23rd to complete the process in order to be eligible for the lottery that will take place on May 30th. As a reminder, this year, we're expecting to be able to provide seats for up to 92 students partnering with TSL Adventures and Child Time. The next thing I wanted to just let the board know is the special ed department did hold a parent meeting last week. I know this was one thing parents had, over the past year or so, spoken about. There were about 30 parents in attendance. Doug Morrissey, our Director of Special Education, presented an overview of the current programs, what we offer, where the programs are located. He also shared some performance data, including some of the three-through-eight assessment in science, as well as Regents exam results and graduation rates. He then opened it up for discussion. Some of the key themes across the conversation included a strong appreciation for staff, concerns about transitions between levels and buildings, class sizes, and some unmet needs, interest for better family resources and partnering with the district. So, there will continue to be some additional parent meetings, and I encourage any parents who are interested to attend those meetings. And finally, we have a couple of school board members who have certificates from the School Boards Association. These are recognitions for, it's a Board Excellence Recognition Program for service and training that individuals on the board have received. So, Lauren Grasso, congratulations, you have a Board Achievement Award. I won't thank you.
I do.
I don't want to make a couple more. Oh, yeah, did she get a pin?
She got a pin.
Do you want a pin?
Thank you.
What did you do?
Pass Lauren.
She's earned a pin.
And Meredith, you have received the Board Mastery Award. And you have this nice folio with complimentary training. Congratulations. That includes my report. Does anyone have any questions for Jody? That's it. Okay. Next up is our board report, and I just, I first wanted to acknowledge the, all the work that went into the Charlie and the Chocolate Factory play at the middle school this past weekend. I also wanted to let everybody know, if you didn't know already, I think it's this weekend, the BC Green team is helping to sponsor the Bethlehem giveaway. There's information on the website about that, where essentially you can put a table out at the bottom of your driveway with things that you don't want anymore, that other people might like to take and reuse. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention was just to acknowledge that it is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and we are very appreciative of all of our teachers and staff in the building. So, I just wanted to put that out there. So, thank you to everybody. Catherine?
A couple things to mention. First, we are into concert season here, and so I just wanted to congratulate all the musicians who had concerts in the last couple of weeks. I know there were some at the high school, middle school, eighth grade was fantastic. And so, congrats to all the teachers and students who have worked so hard and sound so good. Also, I attended what I believe is the Second Annual Multicultural Potluck Dinner over at Elsmere Elementary. This is fantastic. This is where families, families from throughout the school bring a dish to share that represents their cultural background. So, tons of great food and great conversation and great friends. The whole Elsmere community came out, and that was really, really wonderful. So, hats off and big thanks to everybody who organized that and who provided such delicious food. So, thank you there. And then, finally, the last thing I want to share, our very own John Wallston is going to be signing his book, which is out this coming Saturday at one o'clock at the Book House of Stuyvesant Plaza. Congratulations to John, it's quite an achievement, and look forward to reading.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Was it two weeks ago, that beautiful unified basketball game?
Oh, the Assembly.
There was an amazing game. They did it during the school day. The stands were packed, the energy was amazing, and that was really awesome. They were able to schedule that, so.
It was great. It was really great, Assembly, yeah. And I was able to, I was able to watch it online from my desk, and that was a real treat as well, so.
Yeah, it's great to see those, those players get to be highlighted with such a wonderful packed gymnasium and just have that awesome energy, so it was great.
Yeah, I agree. Ewan?
It's National Honor Society induction time or so, so we have, I believe, 73, which is a pretty impressive number, new National Honor Society inductees this coming week. So, I was impressed with the achievement level of those guys. That was it.
Do we have anybody here tonight from Student Senate, high school Student Senate? I'm guessing everyone's finishing up the year, and I don't, yeah, there's nobody here from middle school. So, we will move on to our presentations this evening, and first up, we have our 2025-26 Budget Presentation Overview.
Good evening. Tonight is our public hearing on the 25-26 adopted budget, and before we get to the public hearing aspect, a quick overview and recap of where we are and where we're going.
Good evening. Tonight is our public hearing on the 25-26 adopted budget. And before we get to the public hearing aspect, a quick overview and recap of where we, where we are and where we're going. Beginning around the middle of February, uh, we had a number of presentations to the board and public, uh, on the 25-26 budget, what we were seeing in terms of revenue and appropriation needs, challenges, uh, as well as opportunities. We began with a baseline rollover budget, and then considered various additions and reductions in the areas of the administrative component, transportation, technology, operations and maintenance, athletics, instructional programs, and student support services. We projected revenues, we forecasted expenditures, we discussed the tax cap, tax rates, and the tax levy. And ultimately, the board adopted a proposed budget on April 2nd that will be presented to the voters on May 20th. The election, um, and the ballot initiatives will be presented on May 20th from 7 o'clock to 9, 7 o'clock AM to 9 o'clock PM. All voting will take place in the high school gym A. One of the themes over the course of the budget cycle was the challenge the district had with regard to inflation. Over the past four years, the district has experienced a compounded rate of inflation of roughly 21%. However, the district is confined and constricted by the amount it can increase taxes by the property tax cap law, which provides for no more than a 2% increase on any given year, and that compounds to 8%. So that yellow shaded area that you see on the line graph there represents the inflation that the district had to absorb internally through resource management, strategic decisions, maximizing revenue opportunities, and making sure that on the expenditure side, the district was living within its means. The proposed expenditure by type, both, uh, the dollars and cents, as well as a visual representative of how those dollars, uh, fall out. You can see that for 25-26, roughly $59.3 million in salary, uh, 30 mil, almost $30.9 million in fringe benefits. Those represent the lion's share of expenditure costs for the district. Debt service is down by roughly $1,004,000 from, uh, from last year, and BOSI services and equipment contraction supplies are roughly even. A bit of an increase in transfers and capital outlay of, uh, $1.1 million. That's associated with some inter-fund transfers from the general fund to food service, as well as, uh, the capital fund. With regard to food service, with, uh, Claire Grodin, our Food Service Director, talked a little bit about some of the challenges food service is experiencing in terms of inflationary cost of its own on food supplies and food stuffs. Overall, the budget increase of roughly 2.3%, resulting in a year-to-year increase of just under $2.6 million. Same information, just presented somewhat differently in terms of the, um, the component units throughout the budget. Again, the large increases and decreases sort of present themselves, I'll go into additions and deletions, but again, a helpful, uh, diagram to the right, sort of indicating where those, those dollars are, are allocated. Um, again, big focus on instructional programs and, uh, fringe benefits are, are large drivers in terms of expenditures by program area. On the budgeted revenue side, district is somewhat limited in terms of the available pots of money it has accessible to balance out the expenditure and appropriation side of the ledger, the largest of which is school taxes at, uh, just under $74 million. That represents a tax levy increase of just over 1.1%, which is the maximum amount it can increase taxes by the tax cap law. Pilot payments at roughly $3.6 million. That was a large, um, piece of conversation and dialogue over the course of the process. When we first started the process in February, um, we were anticipating pilot revenue of roughly $163,000. The Bethlehem IDA had identified that an agreement had been met between the taxing jurisdictions and the GB2 New York LLC, it's a power plant located on the River Road, for an additional roughly $3.5 million. State aid at $34.6 million. Budget still not quite there yet at the state level, but we are confident that the governor's proposal and the agreement of the, both the Assembly and the, uh, Senate levels will ensure that that state aid figure will be, remain right around there. It provides for a hold harmless clause that, uh, allows for districts to at least receive a 2% increase in foundation aid. For the, uh, for Bethlehem, that's helpful. It's not a significant amount of money, it's roughly $385,000 in foundation aid alone. The other increases in state aid are associated with increases in building aid, uh, associated with our recently closed-out 2021 capital project and the middle school auditoria project. Other revenues at roughly $3.7 million. A large component of that is interest and earnings. Um, I highlight that only because the, the figures behind that figure assume that the federal funds rate will remain somewhere where it is. If that Fed Fund Rate decreases, um, interest and earning revenue will see a corresponding decrease. Between expenditures and revenue, uh, the district was still a little short in terms of available funding by roughly $715,000. In order to plug that, uh, operational hole, uh, the business office recommended, and the board subsequently adopted, the use of roughly $715,000 of its undesignated fund balance to bring revenue in line with expenditures. I do want to highlight that $715,000 is used to offset an operational or structural deficit within the budget, which will have to address over the course of 25-26 and as we begin our 26-27, um, budget process. Overall, the district was comfortable in proposing, uh, the use of fund balance, particularly because there was a bonus payment associated with the pilot in 24-25 of roughly $617,000 that was unanticipated. So what we're simply doing is shifting that unanticipated revenue that we, we received in 24-25 and allocating that to 25-26 to balance the budget. Over the course of the budget process, we had several additions and reductions on the instructional side. Bookworms, uh, which is a reading and writing program, at roughly $50,000, a $5,000 increase in an arts and educational supplemental allocation, and roughly $39,000 in an increase in BOSI's library services. On student extracurriculars, various stipends for new or, uh, enhanced or expanded clubs, uh, associated with the stipends in the collective bargaining agreements. On the administrative side, roughly $40,000 for Phase 2 of a two-year process for the digitization of employee records, which is moving all employee records from paper to electronic format. General fund transfer of $685,000, again, associated with some additional funding, roughly $200,000 for food service and $475,000 to the capital fund. On transportation, uh, we had an increase of $22,750 for EV bus charge management. That is the next phase of the district's, uh, process and initiative of electrifying its fleet. Operations and maintenance, we had a $5,000 increase for the garden club. On athletics, roughly a $2,800 increase for a athle, uh, ergonop, for a taping and, for go, for a training table. So we'll just, we'll just stick with that. On the instructional side, in terms of reductions, um, various, uh, reductions on the instructional side, what I want to highlight is that the, uh, district leadership team takes, uh, and pays particular, uh, consideration and attention to where class sizes are, where enrollment is. These decreases are all associated with either current vacancies or, uh, unneeded, uh, vacant positions associated with enrollment. There are not layoffs, they are all associated with unfilled current vacant positions. On the student support services, same, same approach, $271,000 there, associated with a social worker, speech therapist, and a clerical position. On transportation, roughly a $512,000 decrease associated with a reduction in five drivers and three bus attendants. Ideally, we would like to have these positions in the budget, but given where we are in terms of recruitment and retention, we never were quite there to getting to these positions anyway, and they were just adding additional cost to the budget that, at present, was unneeded. On the technology side, um, $295,000 associated with the reduction of a data web architect who is retiring, some BOSI's, uh, library services, and an install, uh, BOSI's installment purchase agreement, which has ended. And for operations and maintenance, a small salary, uh, correction associated with a, uh, retirement that's being backfilled with a new position. With regard to capital outlay, the district on an annualized basis devotes $100,000 to a specific capital project in a particular building. Over the past several years, the district has been investing in a door status monitoring system. Two years ago, we started with the high school, uh, for 24-25. That same monitoring system is being rolled out to the middle school. And now, uh, with those, uh, completed, we're rolling out the same technology to the various elementary schools. For 25-26, we're proposing, starting with Hammergrill, only because of the layout of that building with a number of entrance and exit doors for 25-26. We anticipate between design engineering and the actual purchase and installation of that equipment, we should be close to that $100,000, and will roll out the other elementary schools over the course of the, uh, following fiscal years. Quick history on where, uh, Bethlehem Central School District stands in terms of its year-to-year increases on budget. This year, as referenced earlier, roughly a 2.3% increase, but over the course of the last 10 years, budget increase of 2.2%, which again, is well below, um, where we've seen inflation. Again, over the past, of the past four years, inflation at the, the national level has been roughly 21%. Similar chart, but associated with the tax levy history. Uh, what I want to highlight that is, is that the district has been at or below the tax cap threshold for the past 10 years, uh, with an average annual tax levy increase of roughly 1.5%. This year's tax levy increase is 1.12% for 25-26, which is right at the maximum cap associated with the tax cap law. In previous years, the district has always, I can tell you that for 22-23, 23-24, 24-25, the district could have levied more taxes than it actually had. Those tax dollars were in need at the time, so we provided some tax relief to, uh, residents and commercial, uh, businesses within the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. 25-26 preliminary tax rates, these numbers change today only because I recently got the tentative, uh, assessment rolls from both the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. Originally, uh, we were basing, um, estimated tax rates on the 24-25 assessment roll. For, now with the new information, I can, um, it's still tentative, the final rates won't be available until, uh, July. The estimated increase for the town of Bethlehem is roughly $5.69 per $100,000 of assessed value. That represents a 0.26% increase for the town of Bethlehem. And for the town of New Scotland, roughly a $60 decrease or a 2.7% decrease in the tax rate from the prior year. I know those numbers look a little odd, but I, I promise you, whether you're a resident in the town of Bethlehem or the town of New Scotland, you're, you're paying the same amount of taxes based on your assessed value. When we get to the August tax rating, uh, tax rate, um, agenda, there, there's a presentation that sort of spells out how that arithmetic works. Tax rate history by the town, those green boxes show where, um, the tax rates have increased, and the red where tax rates have decreased. Important slide is to show where Bethlehem Central School District stacks up against Albany County and New York State as a whole, uh, in comparison for its per pupil spending. Bethlehem at roughly $21,100, and you can see Albany County is higher, and New York State is even, uh, higher than that. On the ballot, we'll have a number of initiatives other than the district's operating budget. One of the items on the ballot is a bus proposition. The board, uh, at its April 2nd meeting, had adopted, um, proposing to the voters three large, uh, diesel buses and three small, um, gas-powered buses. Total of six for a ballot proposition of 18, 814, 770. The actual impact to the district is roughly $277,000 after you take into consideration the state's, uh, state aid reimbursement at roughly 66%. There was some conversation earlier over the budget process in terms of continuing the electrification of the vehicle, uh, the bus fleet within the district. Presently, the district has or will have 10 vehicles. At the time when we were having this conversation, the EPA grant funding that we had, um, received and had a grant award were suspended. We weren't quite sure where that was going to go, not only for the three buses for last year's bus proposition, but as well as any future bus propositions, including ones possibly for 25-26. Given, given the timing, as well as some operational challenges that we are having with the EV buses that we discussed, uh, at some earlier meetings, uh, there was some reluctance, not only from the business office, but from the board, to move forward, only because we weren't quite sure where the funding was, what would happen, and what the actual impact of the local taxpayers were. Board voted on that proposition on April 2nd. About a week or so later, uh, the district was informed that its grant application that was suspended had been, uh, freed up. So the buses that we had ordered for 24-25, that EPA funding at $200,000 per bus, will be received. We're coordinating with Matthews between the EPA funding and NICE service, so we anticipate having those buses onsite within the next few weeks. The unfortunate downside is we had three other buses as, as, associated with that application, that, given the timing and the concern, um, and the timing of our own process here, we won't be able to take advantage of at the present time. Also on the ballot, a 2025 Capital Reserve Fund for a not-too-exceed amount of $30 million for a 10-year authorization period. Uh, the reserve fund serves as a, as a savings account for the district to save for future capital needs, reducing the need for, for debt service and future borrowing. Voter approval is not only required for the establishment of the reserve, but anytime the district would like to pull funds out to offset, uh, future capital projects. The reason, uh, the business office proposed the creation of a new capital reserve is because the existing capital reserves it has on the books are either, um, closed out. Of the 2015 and 2019 capital reserve, the board just closed that out, those officially out the last meeting, because the funding had been exhausted. And the 22 capital, I do have roughly $14.3 million available now in terms of our savings account, but I only have, uh, roughly a $2.7 million cushion in terms of additional funding that I, I can put in that 22 capital reserve. Should the voters approve a 25 capital reserve, any additional funding above that $2.7 million can go there for future capital needs. Fund balance and reserves, these are the various, uh, savings accounts that the district has as it, at its disposal for either specific or unforeseen needs. Again, the $14.3 million in the capital reserve fund. I do want to highlight the undesignated fund balance. Uh, that balance as of June, uh, at the end of our closeout of 23-24 fiscal year, was roughly $4.5 million. The district, by real property tax law, can have no more than 4% of its operating budget in an undesignated fund balance. The $715,000 that was proposed and ultimately adopted by the board to balance our 25-26 budget will come out of that $4.5 million. I highlight that only because while we, we have that funding available, it's not a significant amount of money, uh, to really offset some either revenue challenges or unforeseen expenses over the course of the year. But we're at the level, uh, provided for by law. Also on the ballot, there are two open Board of Education seats. Three candidates submitted petitions for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2028. And those candidates are John Wallston, Susan Barber, and Robert Teigen. As a meet the candidates night, May 14th at 6:30 PM, located in this room, uh, which is the high school in D122. Some voting information, just a quick recap. In-person voting, it takes place May 20th from 7:00 AM in the morning to 9:00 PM at night at gym A in the high school. Absentee ballot or early voting is in the process. You must complete an application. Those applications must be mailed to the voter no later than seven days before Those applications must be mailed to the voter no later than seven days before the election, which serves from May 13. If the application is hand-delivered to the district, it must be received by the district clerk no later than the day before the election, which is May 19. A completed ballot must be received by the school district clerk no later than 5:00 PM on election day of May 20. In terms of voter eligibility, three criteria, 18 years old, a U.S. citizen, and live within the boundaries of the Bethlehem Central School District for at least 30 days prior to the vote.
You mentioned what the kids vote was for.
There were some PE, pickleball, golf.
Rockets or golf?
Rockets.
Rockets or golf? PE, kids vote too.
Any questions? Catherine?
John, going back to the EV funding, I'm pleased to learn that we have received the funding for the buses that we have already purchased. That is a relief, to say the least, seeing as those were completely funded by state and federal dollars. And had the federal dollars not come through, we would have had to deal with that. So I'm glad they are coming through. As I recall, part of, as we, as the business office was working to give ourselves as much latitude as possible in decision-making, we had applied for and received an extender on the authorization for up to six buses.
That's correct.
We're using that extender for three buses that are currently coming to us. We're not putting EVs on the, or not putting funding for EVs on the ballot to voters this year. Has the business office considered submitting a request for an additional extender for those three buses that we are not, can be using funding for this year?
My understanding and coordination with Matthews is that the extender was only provided for because we were maybe considering a purchase of those three additional ones in 2526 because they weren't able to separate out the grant application between three and three. So given that limited timing associated with the original application and the two extenders, that was the only leverage we had. Any, for additional buses, there would have to be another grant application submitted. The extender would no longer carry forward.
Okay.
The district did submit an additional grant application for some buses, but there has been no progress on any of those new applications. I think much of the work between EPA and state reps have been really on those award letters that were already in hand and the status for those to get that funding cleared up. I have not heard any information or status updates on any new applications that are associated with the most recent round of EPA funding.
If it's possible to just really make sure that another sender isn't, wouldn't be approved, that would be just good information to have as we think of this.
The challenge with that is if I were to extend it, I would have to wait on the three buses funding for the ones that we already have.
I see. Thank you. Then please don't pursue that on my account. I think having the funding in hand for the buses that we already have is the priority there. A couple of other questions, just kind of looking ahead. I know that at the state level, as the legislature passes the budget most likely this week for the state, there's a lot of conversation happening about if federal priorities or funding shifts, the need to potentially come back to Albany and potentially renegotiate parts of the budget to address any shortfalls in revenue. I'm wondering if, you know, there is a world in which the trickle-down impacts of this could impact school districts and could do so in the 2526 year. I don't know how likely that is or not, but it seems like a real possibility at this point based on what we're hearing. So I'm wondering if we had to amend the district budget, what is the process for that?
It depends the extent by which we would need to amend the budget. So the district budget is amended over the course of the fiscal year anyway. I mean, keep in mind that we're putting a budget together, starting usually in December or January for the next July in terms of the start date of the fiscal year. A lot of things change from one year to the next. Priorities change, initiatives change, allocations by different departments and buildings change. We tend to try to address those internally at the business office, looking at, okay, where can you move money from one side to the other? Maybe something was, you don't need this as much anymore, or you prioritize your initiatives. So we will continue to do that for sort of day-to-day operational shifts in needs and wants. If there was a large funding change, and one of the things I have stressed over the course of this budget process, it's budget's a little tight compared to the prior years. I really maximize revenue estimates, making sure that we didn't necessarily have money on the table. As an example, those interest and earnings dollars, right? There's a million eight in terms of revenue estimates associated with that based on our current cash and the current interest rates. If the feds drop that by a point or two, that's going to leave us short, and we're going to have to address some way, shape, or form. If there are changes in the federal side, I don't necessarily anticipate that directly impacting Bethlehem Central School District in terms of federal funding, but if there's a larger impact to the state of New York in terms of federal funding outside of education aid, the state may have to sort of reevaluate its own financial plan, both for the 2526 state fiscal year as well as moving forward. Which may trickle down to districts in terms of maybe a revised state aid formula or something like that. We haven't heard of that yet. I'm keeping in tune to that. Part of my role in charge here is to inform the board and the public of any changes as they happen. If it requires a much larger reevaluation of programs, initiatives, and operations, I will bring recommendations to the board for its consideration and ultimate implementation. We'll have to be a little bit nimble here over the course of the next several months to make sure that any changes in either revenue or other areas, you know, can happen not only on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side as well. You know, we see a large increase in pharmaceutical usage, for example, or electricity rates go higher than anticipated. We're really keeping track of each of those areas of the budget to make sure that we have enough money appropriated or booked in terms of the revenue side and the appropriation side and act accordingly should numbers not seem to line up with those original forecasts.
Is there any policy or any threshold at which a reconsideration would have to go back out to the voters?
Basically, the voters approve the spending plan.
Yep.
So you can't then go back, you can't exceed that. There's no process in place to change that during the course of the fiscal year, so you'd have to wait until the next vote.
Keep in mind, the voters are approving a not-to-exceed amount of roughly $116.9 million, right? So that's the most we can spend as it's currently structured. How that's allocated is, you know, depending on the extent, is either business office prerogative or board prerogative in terms of moving some things around. If, for example, revenue fell off in some, either state aid or some other, that's why we have those reserves. And when we start closing out our fiscal year for 2526, I'll present to you, all right, you know, revenue and the state aid was, let's say, a million dollars short. In order to plug that hole, we're going to pull either additional money from the undesignated fund balance, or we're going to use this reserve to offset some other costs. But I'll do my best to inform, keep the board apprised of those things so that you're not necessarily seeing them at the time of closeout. I'm happy to report to you on a meeting basis or a monthly basis, if there's news to report. I mean, the news may be like, hey, we're looking good, or hey, we're running a little warm or hot, or we're right on budget here. I think that information's important to the public and the board in general because this is just a snapshot in time. And really, it's only about 10% of the work of the business office. Management of the budget moving forward is about, is the real lion's share of that work over the course of the year.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes sense, and because the voters are approving that up to a seed point, it's the board that approves the spending plan and the dollar amount. So thank you. I think this, I foresee continuing to talk about this. I really, again, extend my deepest gratitude to the business office and everybody who works there for all of the work that went in over the past several months to preparing this. And then, of course, the maintenance day and day out. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Next on the agenda is our 2025-2026 school budget official hearing. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed budget as required by law. The notice of this hearing was published in the spotlight, and a copy of the proof of publication will be included within the official minutes. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed budget. And if you come up to speak, I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks. Seeing nobody who would like to comment on the budget, I hereby close the public hearing on the 2025-2026 school budget. Next is our presentation from Jody on the elementary zones of attendance.
Okay, so tonight I want to talk about some of our trends we're seeing with our elementary enrollment and some of the challenges that I think need to be addressed. So I'll start with, oh, I didn't, John hit it on me. So talking about our enrollment, since its peak in 2006/7, our enrollment district-wide has declined by 21.3%. The Capital District Regional Planning Commission is an organization that we've been working with since 2016 and '17. Their projections on our enrollment have been pretty accurate. Several years, they've been really within one student in their projection, so that's been very helpful. They have projected that enrollment will, has declined, but has, may have reached a plateau, which hopefully we're seeing. And current enrollment for the 2025-26 school year does still show a slight decline K-12. Our kindergarten enrollment is still, I've mentioned this in a couple of prior meetings, considerably lower than our projected enrollment. So we're still trying to figure out where some of those students may be or if they're going to enroll. The K-12 enrollment statewide and in the Capital Region has been declining, so this is not just a Bethlehem issue. So looking at our enrollment graphically, you can see at the peak of our enrollment in 2006/7, we were just under 5,200 students. To what our projections is for next year is about 3,900 students. If you look at this across the suburban council, again, as I mentioned, this isn't just a Bethlehem trend. All of the suburban council schools, with the exception of North Colony, have seen significant decreases in their enrollment over this, since 2004 or '05. This most recent data is from 2023-24. Niskuna has stayed relatively flat. And if you look across the state even, you'll see similar trends. The most recent data is from 2018-19 to 2023-24. You can see the dark pinkish-red is the 21%, which is where we are. You can see there's several areas across the state that are similar. And the only area that has seen an increase is that one little blue-shaded area downstate. Some of the factors influencing the enrollment, this has been part of the Capital District Regional Planning Commission trends in across New York State, aging populations, smaller family sizes, we see lower birth rates in families, economic factors such as the high cost of living and the housing market, demographic patterns where families are leaving New York for other states, and increased flexibility to homeschool for more flexible work schedules. That really is, we've seen some increases in that since the pandemic. So our challenge, particularly in our elementary schools, is how do we address the disparity we're seeing and maximizing the facility use that we have? I do think it's important to note that even though we have seen decreases in enrollment really since the pandemic, one of the things that we talked about and one of the things the board has supported is continuing to have lower class sizes. So generally, and we presented this as part of the budget, I know Dave has presented this as part of our updates, we generally keep our K-5 enrollment classes to around 20 students per section, where prior to COVID, we had class sizes that ranged, and we had some on the high ends closer to 30, 28, 29. So we are using more classroom space because of that. With that said, though, since 2005-6, our K-5 enrollment has declined just over 20% or just short of 21%. The enrollment patterns have changed since there was redistricting back when Eagle was built, and then there was some more redistricting when Clarksville closed since 2011 and '12. So what we've seen is that the enrollment has shifted from Hammagrell, Slingerlands, and Elsmere, and we're seeing upticks in Glenmont and Eagle to the point where Eagle and Glenmont are either at capacity or very close to capacity based on the classroom space that they have. The enrollment distribution changes over time. Obviously, new housing developments do impact that. That is a part of the planning commission's reports we get in looking at what are the new housing developments, what zones of attendance are they in, and will that impact our schools' enrollment or not? So some of the discussions that I think are important is how do we balance our class sizes across the elementary schools and optimize our district resources as well as our facilities? And making sure we want to, obviously, our goal is to reduce the number of students who have to transfer between buildings when we can. Just a visual, you can see the decline if you look at Slingerlands, Hammagrell, and Elsmere, you'll see some significant drops there in the enrollment over time. Eagle, you saw a drop there, but now you see it flattening out and increasing, as well as Glenmont, you see generally a pretty steady increase since 2011, which is when Clarksville was closed. So in looking at our current enrollment in our instructional spaces, this chart basically shows how many classrooms we have in each of our buildings. So for example, if you Eagle, we have 25 classroom spaces. That does include art, music, and special education spaces. These are full classrooms. Our general instructional spaces for Eagle, for example, are 23 general classrooms, one art and one music for a total of 25. And next year, our projections at Eagle are 23. So though all of the classrooms that are used for core instruction are filled next year. When you look at Elsmere, the difference there is there's two classrooms that are used for special education, so there's 12, there's 12 sections for next year, two classrooms for special education and art and a music classroom, so they have a little bit of capacity. The one thing I do think is important to point out is even though we might have full classroom spaces over the course of years, some of those classrooms have been repurposed for smaller instructional spaces. So for example, Glenmont has one classroom that was a full-size classroom that they've repurposed to use for reading instruction, special education instruction, or counseling because they didn't have areas designed for small classroom instruction. But this just gives you an idea of what classroom spaces we have, what's our capacity. And you can see, for example, Slingerlands, which used to house what was referred to as the Early Learning Center, the ELC, has a good number of classrooms that are not being used for full classrooms for next year. So this is where we want to look at how we can maximize our facilities, but also be mindful that even though on our diagrams it says classroom space, some of those are being used for other things. So we also need to consider if, for example, at Glenmont, we said we needed that classroom back for a grade-two class, where does the reading teacher go? Where does the counselor go? Where does the special education teacher go? So those are things we need to consider. So if you look at how are, the percentage of our students are enrolled, you will see that, again, this that, again, this just shows it in another way, Eagle and Glenmont are the highest enrolled percent of K-5 enrollment, general instructional spaces. So you can see the others are in the red, meaning those are declining. And looking at the map of our zones that we have, this, we are working with the town, I'll talk a little bit about that, on looking at housing developments, where housing developments are planned for the future doesn't necessarily mean they will happen, but there is a potential for growth in certain areas. So that's something that we are working with the town on. You can see how large Eagle is and Glenmont are two largest, although Slingerlands is fairly comparable. And you can see Hamagrel and Elsmere are our smallest zones, but they have very dense housing populations within those small areas. So some of the next steps that I'm recommending for the board to consider is we do have proposals for two different consultants who do this work. One of the consultants did work with the district years ago when Eagle was built, and it was a full redistricting, to look at the data, look at the developments, work with the community on balancing the enrollment, continue to work with the towns as well as our transportation department because transportation and busing does play a factor in how this all works. Developing a committee to review the current zones and identify the areas that we need to focus on. There are some districts that have what's referred to as flex zones, where sometimes when you have a flex zone, that means if you live in this particular area, you may be assigned to one of two elementary schools, and then you stay in that school for your K-5 experience. That may be an option. Or we may need to look at shifting some of those boundaries that you saw on the map. So there would be then periodic updates to the board, recommendations to the board. Really, we would need to have this work done and proposals ready for the board to consider by next December because that helps in our planning for enrollment and registration and letting the community know if there are going to be any shifts to implement any changes for the 2026, '27 school year. So that's where we are currently, what I believe we should begin to look at so we can not be in a position where we have situations where students are not able to go to their elementary schools, thinking that they're going there, and we have other space in other elementary schools that are underutilized. So I'll open it up if the board has any questions.
You show Eagle is full, but when it started that graph, you've got like 60, 70 more kids in there. Was it just really overcrowded?
Say that again.
If you look at the trend for Eagle.
Yes.
So we started out with 500-something kids. We now have 430.
Yeah.
But the building's full.
So those classrooms before the pandemic were at 26, 27, 28, 29. Now they're between 18 and 20 and 21. So that is something that we could review as part of this process, is do we go back to having larger class sizes?
If you could remind me, is that something that's a, classroom size is a district policy? Or is that a state?
No, it's not a, it's not a policy at all. For the K-5 level, we had guidelines that we used for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and on up.
Just best practice.
Best practice, yeah. So I believe the highest, the recommendation for fifth grade was at 28, which is... It's a lot of fifth graders.
And we used to, I mean, we used to do that.
Yeah.
In some of our classrooms.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Are you thinking?
I was going to say, I think it is, it is a good idea to go ahead with hiring a consultant. I think there's a lot of moving parts that go into this, and I think having some outside feedback on, you know, what are some good options makes a lot of sense.
They may be also, as an aside, they also could help us with, we're struggling, obviously everyone knows, every district is struggling with bus drivers in trying to make sure that we're able to get kids to and from school. There may be, in looking at this, also some recommendations for ways to consolidate or be more efficient with some of our routing as part of this process, which might help.
Catherine?
You mentioned there are a couple consultants that may fit the bill for work like this. Can you just talk a little bit about, like, what are their consultants where this is their?
They work basically with software, with routing, with transportation. So both of them are in that business. So we would enter, we actually have interviews set up with each of them to talk to them about what is their process, what is their plans, what work have they done with other districts? We have, obviously, one of the companies we worked with, I didn't personally, but the district worked with years ago when we were opening Eagle and redistricted the elementary schools at that time. So we have some of evidence of that work. Obviously, there's new people involved, but yes, this is what they do, or one of the pieces of what they do.
And I would just ask that, moving forward, that we have more, I would rather have more updates to the board.
Yes.
Than less, just given, I know this issue can be, it's something that people can get very passionate about.
Yes.
What elementary school their kids are attending, so.
Right.
If that's going to impact it at all.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. And next is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Oh, thank you for the scholarship award number coming up for our students. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, one question, really. The election inspectors. So I know we have, you know, Brittany working 17 hours a day but no extra pay, and there are some people noted as volunteers, some people noted as full pay, and then there's some other people. Are those, like, people we hire? Like, what category is not volunteer and not paid?
District employees, and they get compensated for, like, comp time. That's usually what they choose. Those people, yeah.
Cool, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Next Wednesday, May 14th, at 6:30 here in D-122 is our Meet the Candidates night. And then on Tuesday, May 20th, in Gym A here at the high school, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is the 2025 annual election and budget vote. And then on Wednesday, May 21st, here at the high school, we have our next regularly scheduled board meeting, anticipating executive session start at, from 6:00 to 7:00, and then reconvening to open session at 7:00 o'clock. We do need to go back into executive session to discuss a contractual matter. Could I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If we must.
Any opposed? That carries. So we will do that. So we are going to go do that, but in the meantime, you, pig super-students, you guys are free to go, so if you guys want to come up and sign out.